We are streaming to YouTube, ready when you are, Mayor McWhorter.
I'll call this meeting of the Seward City Council to order. It's Monday, November 17th, 2025, 7:00 PM. Would you please stand while the chief leads us in.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Roll call for tonight's meeting. Barnwell?
Here.
Kreitz?
Here.
Warner is excused. Osenga?
Here.
Calhoun?
Here.
Draper?
Here.
And Mayor McClure?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. We have one proclamation for Small Business Saturday, and I'm asking Vice Mayor Osenga to please read it.
Okay, proclamation, Small Business Saturday. Whereas Alaska's small business community forms the foundation of our state's economic prosperity, with over 99% of all businesses qualifying as small enterprises and providing employment to nearly 140,000 Alaskans across diverse industries, and whereas Seward's small businesses capture the adventurous spirit that has made our historic port city a crossroads of commerce and culture since 1903, and whereas Seward's entrepreneurs have served our year-round community of neighbors and the thousands of cruise ship passengers and highway travelers who discover this town's authentic Alaska character through small businesses, and whereas Small Business Saturday is celebrated annually on the Saturday after Thanksgiving and offers the perfect moment to recognize how Seward's entrepreneurs create the experiences, services, and gathering places that define life in our sea coastal community. Now therefore, Vice Mayor, Mayor of the city of Seward, does hereby proclaim November 29th, 2025 as Small Business Saturday in the city of Seward, Alaska, and encourage all residents and visitors to join in celebrating and supporting the entrepreneurial spirit and hard work of our small business owners whose contributions make Seward strong, resilient, and vibrant, due to the 17th day of November, 2025.
Thank you. And we have a person from the chamber that will accept this and maybe say a few words if you'd like.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, Shop Small Saturday. We really encourage everyone to go support their local businesses, especially businesses who stay open through the winter. It's really amazing that they do that for our community. And we will be doing a raffle, which is amazing. So if you go to each of the participating small businesses, then you can get the entry to win a raffle. And if you have a small business in the community, please reach out to the chamber, and we'll have you guys to listen for most of it. So thank you so much for recognizing all the small businesses, and yeah, we really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have now citizen comments on any subject except items scheduled for public hearing. There is one public hearing item.
Correct.
One, two public hearing items. And other than that, you can speak on any subject. You'll have three minutes. There's a 36-minute total for this. And there is a sign-up sheet for this, but if you didn't sign up, after those that signed up, speak, just raise your hand and I'll let you speak. And when it's your turn, come up and sit in that chair there and speak into that mic. And also say your name and if you live inside or outside the city limits. Mr. Clerk, who has signed in?
There are two people signed in to speak. First on the list is Tim McDonald.
Okay, Tim?
Is the electrical utility off limits?
I'm sorry?
No, it's not.
Tim McDonald, inside city limits. I noticed there's a lot going on as far as money going out for the electrical utility. You've got the contract with Matanus Electrical to renew for $950,000. I think it was $850,000 last year. And then there's talk of a new warehouse at Mile 25 for $850,000. It seems like a lot of money going out, and we don't, you know, is the warehouse really necessary? It's 30 minutes. Either way, you're out there, you're going to have people commuting. It seems like you're going to waste a lot of labor driving back and forth. I firmly believe that the electrical utility should be co-ops when we get a chance in a year or two after the thing is. You tried to sell it twice, now you're trying to drown it in funding. I don't really know what's going on, but it's weird. It really is. And that $2 million a year that is a normal profit for the utility should go back to the customers. We pay 100% for that facility. It doesn't, we don't, we don't need to be tax bots for the city on that. We should be a co-op, and if there's $2 million profit, it gets sent back to us, the users. And there's absolutely no reason not to be a co-op. And as far as us not being able to run our utility and you have to hire an outside entity, how come we've been able to run it for the last 80 years with no help? It's a pass-through. All it is is maintenance, paperwork, and yes, whatever capital improvements you got. But it's a pass-through business. You're just selling electricity you buy from somebody else 99% of the time. So I think it's, you know, any positioning to stop a co-op from coming to fruition is robbing us, basically. It's our money, 100%. Every single dime that that utility spent, plus a lot more, the $2 million you rake off is our money. We don't need to be paying a profit of $2 million a year. You guys have taxes all over the place. That's ours, that's food and oxygen, and it needs to be a co-op. And I wish you'd all come to that realization and start working to it, instead of trying to make it too expensive or too difficult or whatever. None of them are true. We've run it by ourselves for 80 years. Now all of a sudden, since you couldn't sell it out from under us, we can't run it. We have to give millions of dollars in profit to another utility because we couldn't sell it to them. I think it's crooked myself.
Okay, thank you. Who else, Mr. Clerk?
Amanda Sweeting.
Ah, she comes back. Want to talk about Small Business Saturday?
Hi, Amanda Sweeting, outside city limits. Hello again. Like I said, Shop Small Weekend's coming up, November 28th through 30th. As we said, support your local businesses. We'll be doing raffle. It's a great time for early bird Christmas shopping. That's usually where I like to get all my gifts. Also coming up on the radar, of course, is the Seward Polar Bear Plan, Seward Polar Bear Jump, sorry, January 17th, and we'll be coordinating with all the events happening all around that week, and we'll be publishing that schedule very soon. We did just round up our Board of Directors election, so we'll be announcing those results soon, which is very exciting. Congratulations to our new city council members. And then our very own Greg Haas has been announced to be the instructor for the Port Partners program. I really encourage people, if you're interested in starting a business or a nonprofit, it's a free class. It's being financially supported by Royal Caribbean, and then there'll be a kind of Shark Tank Pitch Fest at the end, and a Seward community member will win 20 grand to help start their dreams come true. And if you are interested in possibly being a business mentor in Greg's class, I would recommend reaching out to him. He's looking for local mentors to make his class as relevant to the Seward economic landscape as possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And that was all the time.
Correct.
Does anyone else wish to speak at this time? Okay, come on up. Just trying to get somebody else a second.
Becky Dunn, Inside the City. Wanted to thank the city for all of the public outreach they've offered and all of the input been asking for, and my speech just went away.
Great, so we're going to wing it.
Anyway, thank you for all the input you've been asking and all the surveys, the electric department, the planning and zoning, and all the town halls. I'm here to offer a little bit more input. Outside the city, in the borough, there is a $300,000 senior exemption, $150,000 disabled vet exemption, and $10,000 volunteer first responder exemption, $75,000 year-round resident exemption. Inside the city, there is the state mandated $150,000 exemption for senior citizens and $150,000 exemption for disabled vets. I would like to see the city follow through with the higher exemption for year-round residents. I've actually rented two U-Hauls to senior citizens here in the last month that couldn't afford to live here anymore. And outside the city, the exemptions are a lot more forgiving, a lot more kind. I wouldn't be paying any property taxes here very shortly if I lived outside the city. I think that that would encourage, or at least say thank you to more volunteers, and help people make the decision to purchase a property inside city or at least stay here. Because, for example, I just got a notice in the mail that said that my mortgage went up because the mortgage figures your property tax and your insurance in it. When your property tax, when your value goes up, and property values up here skyrocketing because it's a tourist community, your insurance goes up, your property taxes go up, your insurance goes up because the property's worth more money. So mine alone in last year went up $2,000. So I can either pay, it's moving $2,000. I could either pay that one month sum or spread it over the year. So I think that that would be one way to consider helping year-round residents, give them a little bit of a tax break. And the Kenai Peninsula Borough does the paperwork on that, all the admin stuff, so that would be no burden to the city of Seward as far as administration. And so I decided I'd offer that little bit of input there. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Anyone else wishing to speak right now? Okay, seeing none, we'll move along to the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda. I'd ask for a motion to approve and a second, please.
I'll move with approval of tonight's agenda and consent agenda. I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any changes anyone wants to make? I guess we're pretty happy with it as it is, so we can vote.
Voting on the approval of tonight's agenda and consent agenda. Kreitz?
Yes.
Draper?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Barnwell?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
And Mayor McClure?
Yes.
Your agenda and consent agenda have been approved, and on the consent agenda were the October 27th, 2025 city council meeting minutes. Resolution 2025-112, supporting full funding for the State of Alaska Municipal Harbor Facility Grant Program in the FY27 state capital budget in the amount of $18,186,535. Resolution 2025-113, in support of raising the maximum available Alaska Department of Transportation Harbor Facility grant to $7.5 million for eligible projects on an annual basis. Resolution 2025-114, authorizing the city manager to accept the proposal from CRW Engineering for design and engineering services for the Elm Street Water Main Replacement Project in the amount of $78,840 plus 10% contingency and appropriating funds. Resolution 2025-115, authorizing the city manager to accept the online with libraries Internet Cost Assistance Program award from the Alaska State Library in the amount of $1,242. And lastly, resolution 2025-116, authorizing the city manager to accept the public library assistance grant from the Alaska State Library in the amount of $7,000.
Thank you. So for those people, especially those of you in the back there, the students, those particular items have passed without any discussion or vote. So those, we just, we passed, we agreed on those. Then we move along. Next, we have the city manager report, and it will be on page 51 of the packet. Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I am very excited to share some good news we received just this morning. A big thank to Kristin and all of her hard work led to the city being awarded a grant to bring a Narcan vending machine to downtown Seward in conjunction with the Ktuchik Native Tribe. And so this is an important tool for our community to bring safety, harm reduction, and quick access in emergencies. And Kristin and I will work to keep you updated as this project moves forward, but we're thrilled to share that news tonight, especially after some of the discussions we've been having up here and on that subject. Also tonight, on the consent agenda, you approved resolution 2025-114, which accepted a proposal for $78,000 for the Elm Street Water Main Replacement Project. And a reminder that that project will be funded through a loan that will be completely forgiven at the end of that project. So that is an exciting thing, and I just wanted to make sure to highlight that even though it was on consent. We also have our quarterly financial reports included tonight as a laydown. I did want to acknowledge their late arrival as a laydown rather than in the packet. Some internal workflow hiccups put us behind the packet deadline, and we're tightening up processes to ensure it doesn't happen again. And we'll also have a discussion item at the next council meeting to talk about how best to present these items in a concise, transparent, and frequent way while still maintaining compliance with the updated GASP standards. I'm kind of thinking it as a New Year's resolution for 2026 to make sure that they're streamlined, concise, and what you as a council want to see. We also just received word last Friday on our Q3 sales tax numbers from the borough, and we will see $1.9 million in Q3 sales and property taxes hitting our accounts in the coming weeks, but that is not reflected yet in that report since those Q3 numbers were just finalized late last week. I did also want to take a moment to share an anecdote. I had to go to, I went to the Boys and Girls Club Gala on Saturday night in Kenai, and about five hours before, looked at the invitation and realized that it was a black tie affair. And within two hours, I was able to pull together a black tie outfit from You Can Use It in Erbach by shopping locals. So if you don't think you can find something local this holiday season, I implore you to look because I found a black tie outfit in like an hour and was very proud.
That's excellent. Questions for the city manager or comments? Councilmember Barnwell?
I'm not sure if we're going to talk about the laydown for the financials. Are we, is this the time to talk about it?
For the quarter? Yeah, right now would be great.
So I just looked at that, sorry. I just, I didn't really look at it.
Yeah, of course.
Came in kind of late, and I just didn't get a good look at it. But it looks like it's like 3.5 million more this year than last year in expenditure or in total outline?
Total outline?
So total expenditures were in 25, well, total, it's somewhere about.
Yeah, so we're about, we're over last year year-to-date because of some additional expenditures in our budget, such as increases in salaries and increased positions.
I was going to ask.
But compared to the budgeted for the year, we're doing relatively well. We're doing very well.
Okay, so most of that is probably in the salaries?
Yes.
Deal that we did with it?
Yeah, there's one expenditure item that I will point out that popped out to me, too. It's under the, where was it? It was under the campgrounds, the expenditures in the campgrounds. And that's an interesting one because it's the credit card pass-through numbers. And so it's showing on our accounts in an odd way that we didn't expect while we were budgeting because the credit card fees are passed along to the campground users as a lump sum fee, but then they're still coming into our expenses as something that we're paying. So we'll adjust that in the mid-cycle budget so that discrepancy won't happen again next year. But those fees are paid for by the campground users, but still showing up on our expenses. So more of a pass-through fund rather than an expense on our end.
So transfers and PILT, this always gets confusing, but it's basically the electrical utilities transfers, right?
And the harbor and SMIC. It's all of our enterprise funds do PILTs and admin transfers.
Why would the transfers in PILT be, I don't know, 800,000 less this year?
One of the big ones that we've seen for the transfer in PILT from the electric department is because of the decrease in the rates that we put in for the 2-cent winter decrease. And so that's that big one, and then we also lowered the admin fee from there, not substantially, but we did lower that, and then just regular, where am I on that? And we also, yeah, that's my, those.
Sorry, I want to dig that a little more.
Yeah.
So I'm kind of winging here, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
For the electrical, we're trying to, we're trying to separate electrical from the city in a sense, right? So that we, like, well, like Tim just said, that we spent $2 million, we earned $2 million off electrical every year, which really isn't necessarily correct because there are in-kind services that the city provides that cost the city. So we haven't really made, well, I don't think we've made $2 million on the electrical in years, but how are we, how are we going to go forward on that so we can keep track of that? So we can't compare data from three years ago to now because that in-kind is diminishing. We're not doing as much for the electrical. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but we've also been removing aspects from that as well. So this year in the budget, we removed, I believe it was about $80,000 because of a position that we transferred solely into the electric department. And so comparing it year over year would be.
It works.
It works, yeah, especially as we are moving to lower that over time. So the goal is eventually, as we explore the future options for our electric utility, seeing what that funding stream inputs into the general fund and finding alternatives if there was an option out there that the community would like, whether cooperative, a sell, or a keep, how that PILT fund factors into it. Because it is a revenue generating aspect of our, of our general fund, but also in return for the administrative expenses of it by my time, all of the finance department's time, all of the shared expenses that we see incurred due to the city running an electric department.
Okay. I guess that's enough. Thanks.
Okay, other questions or comments? Yes?
Just a couple things, Madam Mayor, thank you. I noticed one thing, I was cruising through with the DRP program. We've got a new, a new application.
We do.
Going. Add a couple of questions, and I, and I may have, you know, missed something back in the last few months, but there was a time when we spoke about putting the Planning and Zoning Commission back into the review of the DRP, and I thought that we were going to do that, but I don't see them as part of that application process. And the other thing is we don't, I don't see a requirement for anything like a subdivision agreement or anything like that in there. And so I was just kind of curious if that's something that we could talk about in the future, or if it's something we just deem not necessary for this program any longer.
Sure.
A subdivision agreement is still required for the DRP. That's, that's that kind of main, like bonding agreement of how they're, what they're going to install and how they're going to install it, and the cost around that. So that is very much an integral part of that process. And so it's actually required by code.
I just didn't see it on the list, things that were required on the application.
Just because it's required in code. And so we just, we left it in that, so. And then planning and zoning in that process, they were not included in that, but I mean, we're, that's, we're happy to have that discussion if that's something that you guys feel like you'd want to do.
Well, go ahead, Councilmember.
Another thing, on a different note, with the human resources, are we still part of the Alaska Municipal League?
We are.
Are we still members of that? Is there any thought of us putting our salary survey stuff in there with theirs at some point?
Yeah, we actually just completed the, we did that not too long ago, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got, every year they collect all that information, and it's either due shortly or we finished it, but I don't remember off the top of my head, but yes, we did that.
I think there was a period of time where we weren't doing that, and so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we.
I think the last two years.
Yeah, we didn't do it for the last two years, but we did do it very recently and submitted that. Yeah.
One more small thing. When reports on the police and fire rate, I appreciate that, is there a way to separate out the fire and non-fire emergency calls for the fire department, that number?
Yeah, I can look into it, for sure.
Okay, Councilmember Barnwell?
Yeah, just a quick comment on Providence. Because we have, we have this fairly important relationship we have with Providence, and yet we don't really hear much about Providence. And so I'm just wondering, what's the plan going forward in the next six months in terms of some sort of, maybe we can have joint meeting with Providence or some sort of presentation so we know kind of where we're at with Providence here? I guess I'm a little worried because on a national level, I think Medicaid. I guess I'm a little worried because on a national level, I think Medicaid, Medicaid could be in peril or be reduced, and I don't know how that would affect, I would assume with Mountain Aitland would affect them dramatically. I think just to make sure we're as a city, just that we as a council are communicating carefully so we.
If I get general nods from all of council members to schedule that within the next few meetings, I can go ahead and schedule that. I have the Providence Advisory Council Board meeting, I believe, this Wednesday, and unfortunately haven't been able to attend to a few different scheduling conflicts the last three weeks, or three months, but I'll be there on Wednesday and can bring that up while I'm there and get that on the books sometime early 2026 if I see like two more nods over there. Okay, great. Yeah, I can do that, for sure.
Councilmember.
Just one note on that to add to that. I think that's a great idea because there's things that maybe we can look in our management agreement on settlements and different things. There's a couple of things that have happened that the council was not made aware of, and were fairly significant large amounts of money. And so I think we need to maybe get to a point where we can tighten up just a little bit on that.
Great. I can get that scheduled this week, and we'll have it for early 2026.
I didn't give Mr. Bickling a chance to say things, and if you don't have anything to say, could you just quickly update us on Jesse Lee? I know it's in the report, but.
Yeah, so they, they did do drilled core samples, and so they were, they're basically just going down to see how far down the contamination went from the diesel, and it was actually pretty far down there. But the drillers, it's, the report's kind of unofficial, but the drillers told us that they found space between the bottom of the contamination and like water table, like significant space, which is what they were looking for. And so, so they're going to compile their reports and send that to DEC, and then hopefully DEC will sign off and say like, okay, you guys are done testing and mitigating, and then we can hopefully move forward this next spring.
I've heard that before.
No one wants to spend more than I do.
Well, I'll keep asking. Did you have anything else, though?
I don't.
I'm sorry. Are there other questions or comments for either of these guys? Okay, moving along then, we have a city attorney report, we have Mr. Casiola.
You got it, yes.
There, here. And there's a report on page 63, and go ahead and say what you want to say.
Sure, thank you. Sam wasn't able to make it this evening, he asked me to come down. I think this is the first time I've been, four years of regular council meeting, I think I've been here for some planning and zoning appeals before. Not too much to report on, you know, the written report is in the packet, the work before the RCA with the Rail Belt Transmission Organization continues, and I think you guys can expect to hear more about that from Sam or Cody coming forward. If you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
I understand you're here for the planning and zoning meetings tomorrow, right? Also?
I'm not aware of that. I could be.
That may have been.
Sam will be here.
Oh, Sam's.
Sam will be attending the next, the planning and zoning meeting on the second.
Oh, okay, okay. I had heard rumors about that, so, okay. Other questions for the attorney? It's good to have you here.
Thank you.
Have your face to the name, which is, still, I'm pronouncing it.
Yeah, you're correct.
You're struggling there. Okay, well, thank you very much, then. So that brings us now to public hearings. We have two. And the first one is an ordinance for enactment. It's Ordinance 2025-017. Mr. Clerk, would you please read all of that in through the record?
Ordinance 2025-017, approving the land use amendment to rezone 2500 Laurel Street from a resource management zoning district to an auto-commercial zoning district, and 1,000 Hemlock Avenue from an institutional zoning district to an auto-commercial zoning district.
Okay, and you'll find that on page 65 of the packet. I'd need a motion to enact in a second, please.
I move for the enactment of Ordinance 2025-017.
I'll second it.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. We have an administration report, and it looks like we've got an administrator right there.
How do we administrate this report?
Yeah.
Thank you, councilmembers. The last council meeting, we started the first of a few dominoes regarding the land swap the city's been negotiating, and so the final two pieces are today. So if you remember, last council meeting, there's the funding allocation for the utilities to be installed down Hemlock, and then the preliminary plat was recommended to move forward, and now it's at the Borough level. And so we introduced the rezone that was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission because once that plaque gets approved by the Borough, we'd have some split zoning in a few different parcels, which is not ideal. And so if you look on page 71 of the packet, you can kind of see the different split zones that would incur once the land swap becomes finalized. And so basically, this just cleans this up. Part of the agreement was to ensure that the private developer's land just remains auto-commercial, and that would leave three different zoning districts in the city-owned parcel there. And so just after talking with staff, the Public Works Director, it just kind of made sense to keep all of it auto-commercial to be congruent with its neighbors. It also opens up the possibility down long-term future if the city ever wants to develop that. But just to be clear, that's the snow dunk of there are no land use plans in the foreseeable future for that area.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I will, unless, do you have anything? Okay, I'll open the, open the public hearing on Ordinance 2025-017. Mr. Clerk, has anyone signed in?
No one has signed in to speak.
Okay, is there anyone out there in that vast number of people, and it is rather full, I know you can't see, that wants to speak to this one? Okay, seeing none, close the public hearing and bring it back to council? Any questions, comments, concerns? We're pretty apprised of this. Are we ready to vote? Looks like we're ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
Voting on the enactment of Ordinance 2025-017. Kreitz?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Barnwell?
Yes.
Draper?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
And Mayor McClure?
Yes.
That ordinance has been enacted.
Okay, so our second and last public hearing tonight is Resolution, Resolution 2025-107. Mr. Clerk, when you're ready, could you read that?
Resolution 2025-107, authorizing the disposal of city property near 1,000 Hemlock Avenue and the acquisition of privately-owned property near 2405 Sewer Highway for a land exchange.
Okay, and you'll find that on page, starting on page 74 of the packet. I'd ask for a motion to approve in a second, please.
I move for the approval of Resolution 2025-017. I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. You could have just, administration.
All right, thank you, councilmembers. This is the last piece of the puzzle, so we've approved the utility allocation, the plat, the rezone, so I hope this goes through. This just makes it official.
Right, right. Okay, I will open the public hearing on Ordinance, I mean Resolution 2025-107. Mr. Clerk, has anyone signed in?
Nobody has signed in.
Okay, anyone wishing to speak? Yeah, come on up. You actually get up to five minutes on this one topic.
I won't take up that much of your time. I don't have a copy of the full packet, and actually, the one that you just voted in, I'd like to know what the, just the basic terms were, what you're swapping for what and how much cash is involved. And also on this one, what are the basic terms of this? All this just says is you're swapping it, it doesn't say what you're doing or what the terms are. We'd like to know what the terms are.
Okay, we'll answer that when we, is there anyone else wishing to speak? Are you coming up to speak or are you sneaking out? Okay, oh, okay, she's answering the question. Anyone else wishing, wishing to speak on this? Okay, I'll close the public hearing then and bring it back to council, but prior to that, did you want to say?
Yeah, I will, I will say that we are disposing or swapping .973 acres of city-owned property at 1,000 Hemlock Avenue and acquiring .973 acres of privately-owned land near 2405 Sewer Highway. So it's a direct swap of acreage, and no funds are being transferred. So swapping the two parcels that will give us better access and give the private owners land that is more accessible for them as well. So we were both happy in that situation, no funds are being exchanged. It's a swap of equal parcel sizes.
Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to council. Are there questions, concerns, comments? I think we're ready to vote on this one, too.
Voting on the approval of Resolution 2025-107. Calhoun?
Yes.
Barnwell?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
Draper?
Yes.
And Mayor McClure?
Yes.
That resolution has been approved.
Okay, and that was the public hearings. We have one item unfinished business, Resolution 2025-104. When you're ready, Mr. Clerk, could you please read that?
Resolution 2025-104, authorizing the city manager to accept the proposal from SEL Engineering Services and Northern Powerline Constructors for the Spring Creek Substation Rebuild Project in an amount not to exceed $5,381,452.38.
And you'll find that on page 96 of the packet. I'd ask for a motion to approve in a second, please.
I move for the approval of Resolution 2025-104.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Administration, because we need to hear from you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this resolution is authorizing the city manager to accept the proposal from SEL, Cell Engineering Services, and NPC for Spring Creek Substation Rebuild Project in an amount not to exceed $5.38 million. And that $5.38 million also includes a 30% contingency, so ensuring that it might not actually meet that full amount, but it's a contingency we built into there in case of design-driven adjustments during the engineering phase. And this project is an essential piece to our infrastructure upgrades that we've been working on for the past few years to maintain system reliability, expand future capacity, and meets long, sewers' long-term engineer and energy infrastructure goals. And one of the questions that we've been getting a few, every few days about this pro, the project as a whole, is how much the, the conversion upgrade from 69 KV to 115 KV impacts the overall budget of this project? And in talking with Brian and Taylor, the number that we came to looking at that upgrade cost specifically for the KV is about 3% to 7% of the final cost in total. And while that's a large number when you're looking at millions, one of the things that we want to anticipate for is future growth and reliability and interoperability across the whole Rail Belt. So with 115 KV, we're setting ourselves up for success in the future and not replacing all infrastructure and putting old technology into it. If we replaced all of the infrastructure which was needed to be done and replaced it with 69 KV, it's like redoing a whole car and putting the old engine back in. In 10, 15 years, if we wanted to do any sort of power generation projects, shore power, which we're planning on doing, we would have had to gone back and upgraded that anyway in order to allow for that transmission. And also, it's really important as we become part of the Rail Belt Transmission Organization for all of our transmission to meet standards and meet that reliability level. So while it might, so while it might not seem like it was something to some people that was necessary at the time, it's very necessary in order to future-proof our utility and be a part of the RTO and get the shore power and potentially create generation in the future. So that's something I wanted to hit on. I'll also invite Taylor up to speak if he has anything to add.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, the only thing I was going to add, so the two substation resolutions I had put together here are slightly different. So the resolution for the Spring Creek Substation Rebuild includes the $850,000 control building. So the, one at Lawing, I called that out separately because it was separate in the proposal. But anyway, I just wanted to make a note that each substation needs a control enclosure, and that's what the $850,000 is for on both of these. But, no, I think we got a really good proposal from SEL. So they're engineering this with our budget in mind, and so they're going to have a team of engineers that are going to design the substation so it's up to the current codes, but also saving money wherever we can in the construction process, so. Any questions?
Questions? Yeah, Councilmember Barnwell?
Yeah, Taylor, thanks for coming up. Just for visual, or just, just to kind of get us our heads around this, I know when you guys replaced the poles in Nash Road, there were poles that were literally just basically hanging there. They were rotting out. On that substation at Spring Creek, can you give us a visual or how old it was, or some way to rationalize why we're spending $5 million on that particular substation that seems to be out of town? And I know SMIC is there, presence there, future power may be there, Coast Guard may even be there. But can you just kind of help us visualize why it's so needed to spend $5 million there?
Sure, I'm not sure the exact date that that substation was put in, I'm guessing the 1970s sometime, but the ground grid, that's actually in the, the copper ground grid, has been shot with vegetation taking over. There was a Wolverine that got in the control enclosure building. The transformer, the load tap changer on it's failing, and we've got a rack that actually, a distribution rack that has a great design to it, but we still have the oil-filled reclosers feeding each one of the circuits. So we're basically wanting to go in and just rehab this whole thing, basically take all the rocks out, get all the vegetation out of it. If anyone drove by the substation, you'll see that there's two fences. And so the outer perimeter fence was when the project first started, like three or four years ago. And so the new substation will have the, the larger fence that's already installed on the outside, but we're going to rip everything out in the middle. The transformer doesn't have the oil containment up to the current code, so we have to pour two new foundations. Part of the reason why we're bringing two transformers to Spring Creek rather than just reusing one is we've got the transformer in Lawing that's a 12 MVA, so the sister transformer's already sitting in Spring Creek. So we're going to be putting an eight MVA transformer out of Lawing, and then have, we'll have the two 12 MVA transformers rehabbed and working in parallel on that side of the bay. So if we ever have the Coast Guard base come in or any other build outs, then we'll have plenty of power. The other thing is, let's say that we got some hydropower from Godwin or Fourth of July, we could bring that in because we have the capacity to put it on the transmission line from the Spring Creek Substation with those two transformers. But it's basically like, just adding another transformer doesn't cost a ton more because we already have it. And it's the sister transformer for the one that's already there, so they work well in parallel. But yeah, once we're done with this project, we'll have a new control enclosure, and everything will be brought up to the National Electric Safety Code standards, and we'll be good for the next 50 years on that side of the bay.
So can you estimate what percentage of electricity in this, in sewer comes through that side of the bay?
Above a sixth.
And that could jump up?
Yep, so, well, it depends. So when the shiplift is running, it's about two megawatts, and the normal draw on that side of the bay is about maybe a little less than one megawatt.
Wow.
So plenty of capacity.
Okay, other questions, since you're sitting there?
Eight hundred and fifty dollar enclosure.
That's a control room enclosure, not a warehouse, so it's $850,000 for the control of our, which is required. Yeah, so sorry.
Council questions, comments? Councilmember Barnwell?
So, so you build two, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar closures that are mandatory?
So we're lodging for 850, but I'm hoping we get in about 650. So the actual building itself is like $200,000. So it's all part of the National Electric Safety Code, and you have to build to certain standards. And so these things are kind of like aluminum and fiberglass mixed with these certain panels that can withstand arc flashes and all the, you know, the things that the code requires. But then inside of the buildings, you have all your SEL controls for your protection relays and your battery backup for the whole substation and sometimes breakers. And so all the stuff is basically built into this enclosure building in Lower 48 and then shipped up to Alaska and set on site. Whereas the shed we have in Spring Creek right now doesn't meet the National Electric Safety Code standards because I'm sure they just built it in a day, you know, like you would a garden. would a garden shed and then put all the controls in it. Just the requirements have really expanded over the years, you know, for that kind of stuff.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, yeah. Councilmember Draper?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the administration for putting together the laydown tonight. If anybody had a chance to look at it over there, it brings up the history of the project. I know there's been angst in the community, to say the least, about this project over the years, but we're getting towards the finish line now, and this is a really essential piece, and I think this document lays out pretty well what's happening.
Thank you. Yeah, it's very useful. Okay, any other comments, questions from council? No? Yes?
I do have anything, Madam Mayor. I'd like to propose an amendment to Resolution 2025-104. What I would like to do is go to Section 2, and I would like to strike the sentence that says "it will be appropriated through the city's last infrastructure bond scheduled for possible issuance by the end of May 2026 and/or other financing funding."
Strike that entire sentence?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. He's moved. Is there a second, and then we can discuss that?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We can discuss the amendment now. Go ahead, council.
I just was going to ask, is that just like a placeholder comment, or is that actually? Is there a reason why it's worded that way? What is the reason why?
So, we worded it that way because we had previously anticipated paying for these with an infrastructure bond, electricable bond. But as discussions have moved forward, administration has looked towards the idea of an internal loan instead. And so, this sentence was thrown in there saying, "One or the other," you know, we'll do either of those. If we were to do a bond, having that in there allows us to pay for some of it upfront with cash on hand and then reimburse ourselves with it. But if we do an internal loan, we can also do that. And so, in looking forward at an internal loan, we would bring that information to you in most likely January of 2026 to get that all squared away. And so, this whole $5.4 million isn't getting taken out of an account today. It'll be over time, so we have a little bit of leeway there. So, yes, it is there, but also removing it and sort of gives us the firm direction of an internal loan is what council would like to do to fund this project and the other remaining project as well. That was a long answer.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor, I was saying.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, just as a thought, if we remove that, we're not saying that's not possible, because we could still go off for a bond for this. Not that, I mean, I'm not saying that we're going to do that, but when you're doing this kind of stuff, you kind of want to have all your different avenues of funding to be available, and we're not restricting that in any way by removing this.
Technically, no. I would, yeah.
You're correct.
Yeah, technically, yeah.
Okay. Just to make sure.
That's going to be my question, too. Did you want to speak to your amendment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. The reason that I'm asking for this amendment is the reason that I asked to have this poll at the last meeting was because of that language. You know, we don't know what the future of this utility is just yet. And so, my thought is we internally have more than enough funds available to take care of this project without bonding it. If we bond another $5 million or another $10 million, then we're tying ourselves to those bond payments for 20 or 30 years or whatever it is. Well, if we, the thing to understand, if we decide to co-op this, we're going to sell the utility to the co-op. If we decide to sell the utility to an existing entity, we still have that bond now to pay for either way. And so, it just adds more bond debt for us to pay off in the proceeds of the sale. And since we have, you know, we're a little bit beyond what the original scope of this project was. It needs to be done, it needs to be finished. I don't have any issues with any of that. I just feel like we've probably bonded enough for this, not knowing what the future actually lies for this utility and not indebted ourselves more. If we're going to make payments with interest, we should make payments to ourselves with interest. That's just my thought.
Other comments, questions? Councilmember Draper?
I just have a technical question. If we completely strike that sentence, it doesn't have to replace with anything else, we can just leave it?
Yeah, the first part of that sentence covers what we would need to have covered.
Right. Thank you. For the first part of that section. Yes. Speaking to the amendment.
Just to clarify, what Vice Mayor Osenga said was that we aren't, we could always get a bond if we had.
We'd almost get a bond. Okay.
Okay. We're ready to vote on the amendment. Would you like to just skip the amendment?
And just for the city clerk and everyone following along, the amendment is to strike the line in Section 2 of the resolution, starting with "it will be appropriated" and ending with "financing funding." Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That is on page 100 of the council packet, if anyone's following along at home. Okay, so this vote is just for the amendment only. Osenga?
Yes.
Draper?
Yes.
Barnwell?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
And Mayor McClure?
Yes.
So, that amendment has passed, and the main motion as amended is now back on the floor.
Okay, further discussion on the main motion, which would be the entirety of amended Resolution 2025-104. We ready to vote? Mr. Clerk?
Okay. Final vote for the approval of Resolution 2025-104 as amended. Osenga?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Barnwell?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Draper?
Yes.
And Mayor McClure?
Yes.
That resolution has been approved.
Okay, I'm going to, in deference to the number of people that might be eager to get out of here soon, and also, we need a break, so we're going to take about a five-minute break, and then we'll proceed. We've got four resolutions to discuss after this. So, we'll take a, we'll be back at 7:59, let's say, six minutes.
Mayor McClure, we are back on the air for recess.
I'll call the meeting back to order. It is 7:59. We have four resolutions to discuss. We're back on television and everything, okay. The first is Resolution 2025-108. Mr. Clerk, would you please read that into the record?
Resolution 2025-108, authorizing the city manager to accept the proposal from CRW Engineering Group to engineer and design infrastructure to disinfect effluents from the Lowell Point and Spring Creek Wastewater Treatment Facilities in an amount not to exceed $665,600 in appropriating funds.
Okay, and you'll find out on page 152 of the packet. I'd ask for a motion to approve and a second, please.
I move for the approval of Resolution 2025-108. I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Administration, would you like to speak to this?
I would like to invite our public works director to speak to this.
All right. We work under our DEC permit. DEC required under this permit that we have disinfection on both of our lagoons, and that disinfection is for the wastewater that comes out after it's been treated. And so, as it's coming out now, they're requiring most all, I think the country, but Alaska right now, all the smaller communities, all of them to do it. It's going to require, you can either chlorinate, dechlorinate, or you can use ultraviolet. There's the two different ways to do the disinfection on it. So, when they gave it to us, it's got to be done, they were saying by 2027 when that permit ends. We don't have the money to just go out and do that. It's an unfunded mandate that we have. After having several discussions with DEC, they were able to use the state revolving fund to pay for all the, this is the design and engineering only. After that, we'll have to reapply for reconstruction to go through, but this was a loan slash grant for $665,000 for the engineering to do both sides and to set it up with that new infrastructure and equipment to do that. It also has all $665,000 forgiven on it. So, they did come up with it, they stepped up to do it, and I think when they require all of the small communities to do that along with everybody else, it's good of them to at least step up to it now. So, that's what this is, is to, we put it out for an RFP. CRW has great experience here. They gave us this numbers you have. Sorry, there's so many pages, but it was kind of like one attachment and just kind of put it all in there just once. But it gives you, I'm not sure if you guys want all of that, but, you know, we're trying to streamline things, but that was just the way it went in. End of answering questions again.
The key point there is this whole, the entirety of the $665,600 is going to be forgiven.
Correct.
So, okay. Did you, Madam City Manager, have anything to say?
I'll just add a big kudos to Doug and his team for finding these funding options for these unfunded mandates, so.
Okay. Thank you. Council, comments, questions? Councilmember Barnwell? He doesn't even have to raise his hand anymore, he just looks.
Look at her. So, Doug, this is for both Spring Creek and Lowell.
Correct.
And are they identical? They're going to be identical, or?
Fairly close. The prices given in here were almost, they were almost exactly the same for each side, but we've got to design both sides, and both sides have a little bit differences on how they are. A little bit different size over there, but different area and how do you put it and where. You know, we've got to figure out how's a new structure that has to go in to do that.
Couple things. One, the other side is primarily the prison, and that's a state entity. They're not culpable for any of those costs, or how does that work? I've never really looked into that, but is that on the city?
The lagoon is run and owned by the city. Yes, it does mostly serve what the prison, it was originally put in for that population and any growth over there. If we were to get a lot of growth over there, we'd have to expand that lagoon a little bit to do it. But yes, we'd love to try to, we've been working, trying to get extra money from the state, who's always trying to push less to us.
And then the last question is, I remember some conversation about our alternate idea of switching it so that we didn't, we weren't, because we're liable with our Lowell Point facility in terms of landslides and whatnot. Were we talking about trying to find an alternate site in the city or an alternate system?
Well, I think there's been conversations over the years of what were, how to do something different or not. Where would you put a lagoon or a facility, even if it was a treatment plant that you were going to remove sludge removal prior to it going in a lagoon and going through all the cells that would have to go through to treat it correctly, and then the sludge going elsewhere. So, there's still other costs, but where would you locate it in the city was always the biggest thing.
Other questions?
That's been a big topic over the years, long before me.
Yeah. Other questions, comments? We ready to vote, council? Looks like we are, Mr. Clerk.
Voting on the approval of Resolution 2025-108. Calhoun?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
Draper?
Yes.
Barnwell?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
And Mayor McClure?
Yes.
That resolution has been approved.
Okay. Next, we have Resolution 2025-109. When you're ready, Mr. Clerk, could you read that one?
Resolution 2025-109, authorizing the city manager to add the position of apprentice lineman in the electric department and enroll that position in the Alaska Joint Electrical Apprenticeship and Training Trust Program.
And you'll find this on page 188 of the packet. I'd ask for a motion to approve in a second, please.
I'm going for the approval of Resolution 2025-109. I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Administration, want to talk about?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like Taylor to come in and speak to us.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. We've gone about two years now without a journeyman position being filled. So that requires a journeyman lineman to, you know, pick up his roots and move to Seward. And we've contacted the journeyman linemen that are from Seward, and they're not really interested in coming back because of housing and stuff. So we're thinking ahead, four years ahead, and thinking how we can get a journeyman trained up from a local hire. And so we're working with the union and the National Electrical Contractors Association, or NICA, who runs the school. And we've worked out a program with them where we can locally hire someone, you know, that lives in Seward. They can get a lot of their checklists for their apprenticeship knocked out in Seward, but there's going to be a point where they have to leave Seward and to get like high time, hot sticking time, and some substation construction experience, even though we have that kind of coming up in the near future. But, so this is kind of like a hybrid program. They'll get, you know, some of their training down here, but then also some of it working for like Sturgeon Electric and NPC, working construction. And so they need to get 8,000 hours, and then at the end of the 8,000 hours, they can come back here. So what kind of ties them to Seward is we're willing to pay their wages while they're at the school. So it's about two months a year of classed time in Anchorage. And then if they decide that they don't want to come back to Seward at the end of the four years, then they'd have to pay us back for any, you know, funds that we spent on their schooling. So up to this point, I've received six phone calls from people that read the council packet that are already interested in applying for the position if you pass it. I think it's a win for, you know, hiring locals here that want to live in Seward the rest of their life. And becoming a journeyman lineman is one of the best jobs you could ever have. So, any questions?
This is excellent. It's very exciting. I could have done that. Differential equations and stuff.
I checked out my daughter.
Any comments, questions? Ready to vote?
That is, just a couple of questions, Madam Mayor, thanks. So creating, what we're doing is we're actually creating a new job position in the electric utility. Is that, is that what we're doing?
Yes, but technically under the union, so it isn't a PERS position. So if anything did happen in the future with the utility, we wouldn't have to pay a PERS cancellation fee. Because it's within the IBEW rather than the city of Seward.
Well, that's why I wanted to make everybody understand.
Very good question.
It's not a city position that we could get liable for later on.
Very, very good question.
Did you have other questions?
I just, I think it's a great idea because we may have an empty position now, but we're going to eventually have people that retire. And if we can continue our own folks to roll into that, I think it's a great, great program.
Is it sport? It's just one position?
Oh, yeah.
Would it be ongoing? I mean, like, could it, I guess?
Yeah, we would assume somebody goes through the process, becomes a lineman with the city of Seward, and then we can hire another student to start the process.
Just one comment. My understanding is also if, when they are working at another utility, then they'd be paid by that utility.
Correct.
Working for us here in Seward.
Yep, so how that works is there's, they call in their books at the apprenticeship hall. And so the candidate has to sign their name on the books, and then calls come in from various companies, and you have to go with whoever calls your name. So they could end up in Fairbanks, they could end up in Homer, you know, out at Copper Valley. It's like, you don't know where you're going to be going. So that's the, that's kind of the fun part of it for a young kid, you know, because a little bit of adventure going on the road and stuff, so.
Sounds great. I think we're ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
Voting on the approval of Resolution 2025-109. Osanga?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Barnwell?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Draper?
Yes.
And Mayor McClure?
Yes.
That resolution has been approved.
Thank you. Next, you might as well just stay. We have Resolution 2025-110. Mr. Clerk, could you please read that?
Resolution 2025-110, authorizing the city manager to allocate funds for the Mount Marathon Hydro Plant Rehabilitation Project in an amount of $400,000 and appropriating funds.
And you'll find out on page 193 of the packet. I'd ask for a motion to approve in a second, please.
I'm going for the approval of Resolution 2025-110. I'll second.
Okay, Administration.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like Taylor to speak to this.
And I'll have to start with my apologies on the spreadsheet. So Ashley Lipsy said it was a packet killer. And so there was some vital information that didn't make it on there. And I was actually trying to just print my spreadsheet before coming over, but the vital information wouldn't even show up on the print screen. So the full price, everything added together, if we bought everything at retail and we paid construction labor to rehab this project, would just be slightly over a million dollars. So in the meantime, we've gone over to Cordova a couple times. Once for James's award, and the other time to check out their hydro and to see how they run things. They don't really pay retail for anything. So they have the ability to go on the internet and find these government auctions and just sit there, bid on switchgear and their controls and everything, and they're buying it for a cent on the dollar. And so what my proposal is, instead of spending a million dollars to complete this project, I want to complete it for $400,000, which is probably still a little steep, seeing like what some of this equipment's going for. So basically, the federal government was going to build out tons of solar systems, and all those projects got canceled. So now there's all the switchgear and the controls and everything we need for our Marathon Hydro being auctioned off. And so what I'm asking for is the ability to create like a blanket PO for $400,000 and then buy all the equipment that we need. And then instead of paying for construction labor to build the stuff out, it's, you know, we've got James and AJ out there putting the stuff together. Our SEL, that's Engineering Spring Creek, is going to give us some support for the SCADA hookups and some of the relaying. But yeah, we can basically complete this project as cheap as possible. And then once we complete it, with the generator that's on there right now running 60% of the year, it's like $277,000 in savings for our COPA without upgrading the generator. But the pellet turbine can actually spin a bigger generator. So a year down the road, we could upgrade to a 600 KW from the 250 and then save closer to $800,000 a year. But anyway, that's what my ask is. And I don't know if anyone's been up the Jeep Trail lately, but we got the intake manifold uncovered and the sluice gate open on the weir. So we're ready to pull the intake manifold and bring it back to Fort Raymond for refurbishment tomorrow. And then we've got everything spinning down in the power plant and are hoping to, in about a week or two, get some lighting upgraded down there and then have a public open house to showcase the project and talk to the old timers that built it.
That's excellent. I run into some of those old timers and they're excited. Okay, so that's what that is. Some of us got to see inside the building on our tour, I think. Yeah, and that's really exciting, too. Any questions for Administration on this? Appreciate the pictures that you've been posting to some. Are we ready to vote? Oh, Councilmember Barnwell.
Just curious on the estimate of, sorry, per year, what do you estimate? Quarter million dollars or $300,000?
$276,000, $277,000 saved on the cost of power from Chugatch annually with the current intake, or the current turbine. But if we upgrade that and show proof of concept, we can get that up to $800,000.
Okay, so that's based on, you don't have flow data, so how do you come up with that?
We got the historical flow data from 1981 to 1990. So it's based on that.
And then for the upgrade to the 600, approximately how much money would that cost?
So we can buy the generator for $40,000. And, but it requires a lot of labor because we actually have to bust up the concrete underneath where the mounts are because the generator's larger and then it's a direct drive unit. So we're losing a ton of efficiency in the speed reduction gears. And so it sounds like the reason they went with the 250 KW is that's what the Providence grant was for, was 250 KW. So they put this gearbox in between the turbine and the generator to reduce the speed to have a smaller generator. And so that gear reduction box actually is full of oil. And then it's water cooled from a piping system that goes through. So I mean, then you also have the chance of a small spill in there. And so just by removing the gear reduction box and putting the 600 KW direct drive in, then you're, you know, also making it so you don't have as much oil any in there.
Other questions, comments? Ready to vote? We're ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
Voting on the approval of Resolution 2025-110. Barnwell?
Yes.
Draper?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Osanga?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
And Mayor McClure?
Yes.
That resolution has been approved.
Okay. And lastly, we have Resolution 2025-111. Would you please read that, Mr. Clerk?
Resolution 2025-111, authorizing the city manager to renew the management agreement with Matanuska Electric Association to provide for the electric department operations in an amount not to exceed $950,000 and appropriating funds.
You'll find this on page 201. I'd ask for a motion to approve in a second, please.
I'm going for the approval of Resolution 2025-111.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Administration.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will not invite Taylor to speak to this. Instead, I will speak to it and say, since March of 2024, Seward's electric department has been successfully managed under contract by Matanuska Electric Association, or MEA. A partnership that has increased our technical capacity, improved daily operations, and strengthened Seward's role in statewide well belt energy discussions. MEA provides both the utility manager and operations, utility operations supervisor, Brian and Taylor, positions that are nearly impossible to hire under our pay scale and receive qualified candidates. Currently, by our pay scale, both of these positions combined with benefits would cost the city about $500,000 at minimum. We defunded these positions in our budget to make budgetary space for this contract, which allows us to pay market rate for both of these positions while also having some flexibility to bring in other assistance from MEA. For example, this past summer, we had a billing specialist come down for a few weeks and work with ours team and fill in on some vacancies when we were short staffed. This proposed renewal continues the structure for one year with the option for two additional one-year extensions. The scope remains unchanged, and the annual not to exceed amount increases from $850,000 to $950,000 to reflect the utility manager Brian, Brian moving to full time and still allowing flexibility for occasional additional support. Previously, Brian was working part-time for the RRC and the remainder of his time for us. And as we've become more involved in a lot of the policymaking decisions that seem to just present a few conflicts, and also as we move closer and closer to finishing all of these things, I want more of his time. So it's really beneficial to us as a city and a utility. Also, if we look back at previous years, actual expenditures have consistently came in below the not to exceed. In 2024, because the contract didn't start until early April, we paid, I believe, about $500,000 or so thousand. And this year, we're at just under $650,000 with a few months left in the year. I bring that up to showcase that we're not shoot and to race to get to that amount. It's given us flexibility so that we can call on MEA for other assistance as needed because we are a small utility. One of the other things I'd like to point out is that this is not a problem unique to us as a municipal electric utility. The Ketchikan Utility has had their positions posted for several months. Their city manager is also slash utility director and is, has been vacant. And then there's two other positions under that that are vacant. That would total a pretty large sum equivalent to this, to do similar positions. Overall, this renewal maintains stability in utility operations, ensures the continued progress on major projects like the electrical infrastructure project and our Clean Ports Shore Power project, and supports the long-term planning efforts underway with our community. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions, comments from council? Councilmember Kevin?
No, Madam Mayor, thank you. Yeah, I think, I think it's a good idea to continue this. One question I have when it comes to personnel stuff is the positions that we are not filling are PERS positions. Is that correct?
Those are PERS positions.
And so if we were to decide to terminate this contract and then hire those positions, still not knowing what the future of our utility is going to be, we could end up with a, two top-level electric utility positions that we didn't need. And then we would end up being penalized by PERS to get rid of those positions at some point.
Yes.
So I think right at this point, I'll just continue with my theme that it's probably a good idea to continue this direction until we have a firm hold on what we're going to do with the utility. Plus, I think these guys have been doing a great job.
Agreed. Councilmember Barnwell.
Could you give an example of why we need Brian full-time? How, I mean, just seems more and more.
The big example of what I would point to is the policy-driven thing. As we have a lot of these RRC, RTO, RUM meetings, Brian is in meetings for the city of Seward Utility. I would say they're all on my calendar too still. So probably like 12 hours a week some weeks. And previously, when he was doing this other position for a few hours a week as well, he would also often run into conflicts. And so having him full-time in this position, I feel would be beneficial for our organization both policy-wise and operationally, to make sure that he can focus and hone in and advocate for our utility at 100%. And to clarify that, too, they are positions paid for by Matanuska Electric Association, but many times, MEA and those staff members have reiterated, they're always going for the best interest of the city of Seward. And I've seen that firsthand while MEA and city of Seward have argued over something at the RTO while Brian and the MEA representative do that. So these two people are advocating for our community and our utility. And having Brian doing that full-time is something that I'm excited about.
Can you give a concrete example of something that he's done or he may do?
Yeah, with him and Cody, we got our transmission into the RTO, which was an uphill battle to have our transmission be defined as backbone, which means down the line, once that gets up and running, our transmission costs will be allocated to the RTO organization rather than the city of Seward. And saving us upwards of $2 million a year. I can't think of any other right now, but that one's a big one. Yeah.
Okay, other, other questions, Chris? Nope. Okay, Mr. Clerk, we're ready.
Voting on the approval of Resolution 2025-111. Kreitz?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Osanga?
Yes.
Draper?
Yes.
Barnwell?
Yes.
And Mayor McClure?
Yes.
That resolution has been approved.
Okay, and that, that was the last item of. This brings us to an announcement that just, if you're following, following city council meetings, we normally meet the second and fourth Mondays. But in December, we're just meeting once, and it's going to be on December 15th. So right about in the middle. And we're down to citizen comments. This is the five-minute-per-person time to comment on things. And there's no sign up for this, you just raise your hand, and it's the usual format. So does any, come on up. So, does any, come on up.
Hey, McDonald, Inside City Limits. We're very efficient, hour-and-a-half meeting. First off, I want to thank Councilman Calhoun for bringing forth the reality that you may not own the utility in a few years. I think it's the only way to go for this, all this. And nothing against Matanuska Electric or Brian. I've heard from the crew that he's doing a really good job. They like him. But the thing about is, I thought this position was so that they could train somebody to do their job. That's why it's a one-year contract. You know, I mean, if we're just going to hire him year after year, why don't we pay him $400,000 bucks a year and hire him away from Matanuska Electric? It's probably more than he's making there. So, I don't see this continuous, you know, and it's also conflict interest. When we had our vote, Matanuska Electric was in the running to buy the utility if the vote was lost. And it wasn't lost. But yet, here they're running the utility and getting a nice fat little contract. Again, so I don't understand what's going on. If we're spending all this money, why aren't we training somebody for these positions? These are valuable people. They should be passing that knowledge on to somebody else that we can keep forever. So, you know, it looks fishy, guys. It really does. It really looks fishy. And I'm going to say something else about the sewer legislation and low point. And we just, you just voted to spend $665,000 for ultraviolet or other means to get the bacteria and viruses, but that's only a percentage, the affluent. What's, what they're finding in the fish is the chemicals that we take, which this does not kill. All the different drugs that people take, illegal and illegal, all the different hormones, there's a lot of them in there, and they're all showing up in the fish. So, I mean, we definitely need to start testing the fish next year and see what's going on. This year, I think it's the second year in a row, some of the fish are coming in with soft flesh, you know? Silver is a big, strong fish, man. They're stronger than any of the other fish, except maybe a king. And their meat, some of them, you get their meat and instead of firm flesh, you can put your finger in it and it doesn't spring back. You just push it slight pressure and you're pushing a hole in it. It's mush. And I got a package of that that was smoked and it was inedible. I think there's a connection. Again, the bacteria and the viruses in there are just part of the problem. It's the chemicals that everybody takes. All the different drugs that you and you and you and you take, they all end up in that system, and that's what's showing up in the fish. And there's only one way to kill those. It's to make them inert, you have to burn them. That's the only thing that, when you burn them, then it's inert, it's potash. You think it's funny? I hope not, because it's not funny. I mean, despite our moral and ethical obligation to protect our fishing game and natural assets, there's also a brand, you know? The salmon derby, I mean, we're supposed to be a natural wonder of the world, yet we're filling it with shit, literally. So, it is serious, folks. You're going to have a dead bay in a few years. And you're saying, oh, I'm not trained in that or whatever, blooney. We see what's happening out there. The fishing has gone down steadily for the last 30 years inside the bay. None of the, none of the salmon derby fish that win come from inside the bay. They're out there on Cape Biolique. They're all pass-through fish that are going Cape Biolique to somewhere else. So, these fish, in my opinion, are getting polluted because of the chemicals in the water, which this will not do. That's what the sewer treatment plants do, but there's still chemicals in the fish. You have to burn them. And there is an outfit that can do it. And they claim that their system takes 30% less energy because they do it all at once. They produce electricity, hot water, and, excuse me, yes, electricity, heat, water, and potash. And they do it by their flash burning this stuff, evaporating all the water out of it, burning the 1% affluent that has all the chemicals in it. And that's the only way you're going to do it. So, this is a stop-gap measure and that's all. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Becky Dunn, Inside the City. Found my speech. Forgot important information. Everybody needs to reapply for the residential exemption, even if you have the $50,000 exemption right now. And even if you live inside the city, because it expires at the end of the year. And you need to apply if you live inside the city because portion of your tax goes to the Kenai Peninsula Borough for handling our property tax and sales tax, et cetera. So, if you have any questions, you can go to the Borough Office at the Bear Creek Multi-Use Building or call the Kenai Peninsula Borough Office in Kenai. And they can help you with any questions or fill out any forms or print them out. And I'll save you one phone call. Even though you're asked for your email, you don't receive any email confirmation. So, save them a little bit of phone calls, maybe. And I hope Darryl Shaplemeyer was listening to Taylor's speech, so if anybody, maybe I'll give him a call and have him listen. We had an interesting conversation the other day that applied to the Jeep Trail project. And I think that that is about it. Oh, I would like to bring up that there was a brief mention in the Chamber Newsletter about starting the tourist invest practices or something. So, if people are interested in participating in that or being on there, to call the Chamber. And I would like to get a report from them or an update. And when I did interviews with Christie Terry in the port of Tomorrow, they were surprised that Seward hadn't implemented this already, the first, second, and third interview. So, anyway, let's get that moving. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? It's your last chance for the evening. Okay, then I'll bring it back to us, administration. Any comments at this point?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder that we will have our tree lighting ceremony out front of City Hall on Saturday after Thanksgiving. So, Saturday, the 20-something, 29, at 6:30 PM. And I hear maybe that Santa's going to be there and that there'll be cookies and hot cocoa.
And there might be a Grinch.
Oh, I hope that Grinch doesn't show up. She'll try and have his work cut out for him if he does. And that's all, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bigling, did you have any?
No comments, thank you.
Okay. I'll start off with Councilmember Draper. Do you have any comments?
I do. I just wanted to say how excited I am to be a council. It's been, so far, really fun. All of the city employees have been so welcoming. Doug took me on a big tour, four-hour tour around, and actually, Chris went along with us, and I just can't believe how much we've got going on. In four hours, we didn't even come close to seeing everything we wanted to see. And community members, too, have been really supportive of me, so that is really great. I wanted to say that I guess now I am one of the old people because I remember that hydro project being on our city when the hospital was the community hospital, when it was a governing board. I was on the governing board and we were talking about that hydro project in either the late 70s or the early 80s. Anyway, lastly, before our next meeting, the Kenai Cruisers are hosting the Holiday Arts and Dance Fair at the Abboton Camp, so make sure you...
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Calhoun?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, a couple of things. I just want to welcome Councilmember Draper to the dais. It's good to see you here. And don't forget Thanksgiving's coming up. And as always, there will be a community meal from 1:30 to 4:30 at the American Legion. It's for anybody in the community. It is free. And we also deliver meals on that day. If you call us, we can add you to our list. I do want to say that we do that mostly for people that are homebound or sick or can't get out, that kind of thing. It's not just because you don't feel like getting up off the sofa and coming out to join us, although we have done that. But mostly, we try to just keep our driver's deliveries to those that really need us to come out to their places and deliver. So, we'll be doing that. We have, we're working on our Operation Apple Pie list right now. What that is, is any kids that are from Seward that are serving in the military, if you will give us their names, addresses, we will send them a gift package. Again, at no cost. It's a program the American Legion does, but we need to know those names as soon as possible so that we can make sure we get that stuff out in time. You know, one thing I'm going to just say about the electric utility, we could offer $500,000 a year to Brian and Taylor, and they might say no because they don't know if in six months, the utility's even going to be ours anymore. I think having the contract that we have is the best option we have right now because we're not going to draw the kind of experience that those two bring to us to a utility whose future is up in the air. You know, somebody's not going to pick up from someplace and come bring their family here thinking, heck, I might not have a job in a year. I might not have a job in six months. In a perfect world, it'd be great to have both of them here full-time, absolutely. But I just don't think we're sitting in that situation right now. And the only other comment I'm going to make, you know, I am a free speech kind of guy. Absolute no questions. But I will tell you that people will listen to the public a lot more if they're less derogatory and accusatory and maybe just a little more open to a friendlier discussion. Everybody have a great Thanksgiving, be safe, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you. Councilmember Kreitz?
Just want to thank everyone that spoke tonight and thank Doug and Taylor for all their resolutions. I know the electorate counted a lot and thanks for their hard work. I think they're doing a great job. And just remember that the fire department's having a chili cook-off on the 22nd, so everyone's invited.
Okay. Councilmember Barnwell?
Welcome to Councilmember Draper. It's great to have you. I want to echo Councilmember Calhoun's comments there. I think the electric department, we're, I've said this over and over, but we're really lucky to have these guys. I'm really tired of saying yes to Taylor. But, you know, I think we have to suck it up and do the right thing here. We are doing the right thing. And I think these guys are very creative and thinking out of the box. They're, they just got great energy. And I don't think we can find a better situation, honestly, for where we're at right now. I really, I think we're super lucky to have these guys. So, thanks, Taylor and Brian, for the work. Doug, also, you don't, you don't, the wastewater guy doesn't get as much attention, but thanks for getting that grant. I mean, that's pretty important for all of us. So, thank you for doing that. And that's it. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Osanga?
Well, I'll start off by saying welcome to the dais, Councilmember Draper, and welcome back, Councilmember Calhoun. Don't forget to, I would really encourage people to really participate in Small Business Saturday. We've gone out the last couple of years and I actually have a lot of fun running around town and checking out all the things that are going on. It's actually pretty fun. Everyone, please have an awesome Thanksgiving and be careful out with the snow and ice and the rain. It could be very slippery at times, I'm sure. Just be careful out there.
Okay. Well, yeah, welcome to Councilmember Draper. Good to have you seated and welcome back. It was nice to have all the government, I'm assuming all those students were from a government class. If you didn't know, they, during the break, they get extra points, I guess, if they have their picture taken with the mayor, so we had to go up and do that. That's pretty neat. If that had been an option when I was a student here, I would have been attending every meeting, but, oh, wow. I want to point out again that our B H S has a really interesting history talk Thursday night at 7:00 at the Community Room. We're going to be showing some history of the Lowell Canyon Tunnel. And then, also, Doug is going to be presenting some of the plans that the Army Corps of Engineers is formulating to divert that tunnel into a new tunnel. And I've talked to a few people about that as I've been putting up the flyers, and there is some interest, so I'm hoping that you show up. I also want to, I'm not going to list all of the concerts and open houses, but check out the Seward Folly Events page coming up in December. There are concerts and open houses like crazy during the holiday season. And thank you to Becky for pointing out the reapplying of that, to that, for that exemption. It's the homeowner exemption. And if you haven't heard, in order to get the $75,000, it used to be 50, you have to reapply to the borough. It's just a simple form. Senior Center has them run off up there if you want to go up and pick them up or give me a call and I'll tell you how to find them. But you need to do that if you want to get the exemption. And also, yes, be careful. It's amazing, even with the snow, how many people are out there biking with no lights in the dark. It's pretty scary. So, be very cautious driving and keep your eyes open. Any other comments?
Yes.
I would be remiss if I did not mention realizing that our December meeting has changed. Saturday, December 13th...
Oh, yes.
Is the day with Santa, the American Legion Auxiliary. So, your kids can come down, they can ride on the fire trucks and stuff with Santa, and then everybody comes in and gets gifts from Mr. and Mrs. Claus. I believe that's at 11, but don't hold me to that. But check that out, that's coming up on December 13th, Saturday, December 13th.
And prior to that is Rotary's Breakfast with Santa in conjunction with the Parks and Rec at the Seward Senior Center.
And we actually met with the Legion to dovetail it so that the kids can do both.
Oh, awesome.
It's always been a scramble.
There's a whole schedule. You'll see it posted, I'm sure. Thank you for that. Any other stuff? Okay, with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:43.